All right, we have a quorum and it's 5:30 so I will call this special meeting to order. The first matter on our agenda is 2.1 Academics, rescind the approval of item 2.10 from April 6, 2016, relocate the exiting pathways program from WD Baker Smith Career Center to La Rosen. All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Angel and a second by Mr. Lachey. Mr. Craig, Ms. Samick, any discussion of this item as to why we move the program back?
Yes ma'am, I just want to say that the students, the train, last year they were housed at the Career Center for a full day, we did make the request to have half a day at, for academic studies at La Rosen, to open up more space at the Career Center for our high school students. It's been a successful transition, everything's going well, there are no problems. The Board has decided to open up the Edward J. Sam Accelerated School of Lafayette at the Career Center. And in the process, we moved the staff that had offices at La Rosen, we had moved them to the Career Center. They are now in the wing that we would like to begin processing to get ready for our new school to open in July. Ms. Caesar is the principal at WD and Mary Baker Smith Career Center. She approached me to say that she would like to have the students full-time back on her campus. We are currently getting the classrooms ready that are empty at WD Mary Baker Smith so that we can transition the students back. So honestly, they're there, they arrive there every morning, the entire student population, and they're transported to La Rosen, we're just asking to rescind the decision and leave them at the Career Center.
And I understand it's an easy transition or connection between the three programs that are housed at WD Smith?
Yes ma'am.
All right, any questions or comments from members of the public? All right, members of the Board, Mr. Santani?
Yes, Ms. Samick, I received an email today from a teacher concerned about the access to computer technology at the Career Center. And that the, he said that they're, they've been told that their computers will not be moved to the Career Center yet, he says that many, many students have made great progress in their, their education at La Rosen in that time. Do we have any, or do you have any comment, or has that been considered in the, in the discussions about moving?
Yes sir, and I want to make sure that everyone understands that, I did receive that email as well. And I have addressed it, and the gentleman did send me a thank you for my response. The technology that is necessary will move to the Career Center. He was asking if basically, basically he's been informed that our students need more direct instruction and less work on the computers. We are not moving the computer lab to reset it up as a lab, we would distribute any computers for enrichment or for intervention tools as necessary.
Thank you very much.
Yes sir.
Mr. Bruce Horn?
Ms. Samick, how many of those students are going to transition into the new Edward Sam facilities?
Well, that's a-
Isn't that, isn't that program sort of phasing?
Yes sir, and actually we've had several students have earned their high set diplomas so actually they have exited exiting pathways. Some of the students will apply, again it's a application process and we haven't started yet, so I cannot give you a definite number. We currently have approximately 60 students who are in the later part of the program. They may wish to transfer over and graduate with a high school diploma instead of a high set.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the Board? 7-4, none against. All right, the next item on our agenda is 2.2 Risk Management, update on damage claim for Westside Elementary School, Ms. Bernard?
Thank you, Mona Bernard, Director of Risk Management. We're going to give you an update on the district's claims with both our insurers and FEMA. Andre Como, who is our broker, insurance broker with Regions, is handing out the handout to you, and I'm going to ask him to come up and go through that with you so you'll know the efforts we've made and where we're going.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard, Andre Como, Regions Insurance, we're a broker on the insurance matters regarding the Westside School. And I thought it would be helpful to start with just talking about three terms, there's several terms that get thrown around, but there's three terms I'd like to just make sure that we all sort of on the same page, like-kind and quality. Your property insurance policy pays to replace what was lost, in this case by the flood, on August of 14th with materials of like-kind and quality. Basically, put you back where you were before the flood happened. Now, there are also a term code upgrades, it'll appear in different, different forms, but code upgrades are basically when the law says that you have to build something back to a higher standard than it existed before because of the standards, the old standards were not as high, that there is some additional expense associated with meeting those new codes. Your insurance policy covers some of that. It was suggested that the insurance companies might be balking at that, it's not accurate, they've agreed to pay up to two, 1.2 million so far for code upgrades. That's part of this. Mitigation upgrades, we're going to talk about the architect's scope of work, and there are mitigation upgrades and, and they can address that for us, but anything that you do that's a voluntary upgrade, that you're going to do to enhance the school beyond what it was, or in this case, put something into the school to mitigate the damage that you might have if the school floods again, that's not covered by insurance. That's not part of what's covered. Next thing I have for you on the next page is just a little timeline to show you how we got to where we are in this process and what's left to be done. The event was on 8/14, adjusters for your insurance companies were on site, the 17th and 18th, they brought in construction consultants to help them understand the details of the construction of the school and what is needed to be done to put the school back the way it was. They provided a proof of loss, they didn't have a number, but they said, okay, it's at least going to be a million and a half dollars. You have a $1 million deductible on this policy, and so they agreed to advance you a half a million dollars, and that's what happened on 9/13. On 10/13, the construction consultants put their first draft, their first draft of the estimate, cost estimate to fix the school. And it's a, it's a pretty big document, it's in a lot of details, breaks it down by classrooms and hallways and offices. And that number was 1.16 million dollars. Now, we received shortly after that, well, on the 3rd of November, the architect's scope of work, which had a number of 7 million dollars. Without getting into any of the details, we recognized right away, there's a big gap there, and we want to understand that gap. So we sent the architect's scope of work to the adjusters and asked them to tell us, point by point in the architect's scope of work, what the insurance will pay for and will not pay for. And we're going to talk about that in just a minute. The adjusters came up with their first official measurement of the loss, 1.16 on 11/9, 11/14, that was revised to 1.6 million dollars. On 12/5, the adjusters' engineers were on site, so after, one of the things that happened when the architect's scope of work was sent to the adjusters was it immediately recognized that one of the discrepancies or the differences was in the mechanical equipment. And so they, rather than wait until the rest of the process is done, dispatched some engineers to go out and investigate the equipment, and we'll talk about that. On 12/6, the adjusters came back and said, we'll give you 1.2 million dollars for code upgrades. So after the work was done to determine how much it was going to cost to put it back into like-kind and quality, then that information was taken to determine how much it was going to cost to bring it from like-kind and quality up to current codes and standards. So that information came on 12/6. Also on 12/6, we came here and presented an update at that time to the combination of the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee. We provided a report at that time, and at the end of this package, and I'll go over it, I'll provide an update in the same format that I gave you on 12/6. January the 3rd, a second proof of loss was received, underwriters recognized additional monies that are ultimately going to have to be paid and put up another $500,000 advance. And then on January the 10th, we received the adjusters' engineers annotated, annotations or their notes on the, in the format of the architect's scope of work, and that's what we're going to talk about here in just a second. The architect's scope of work was revised again last week, and then just Friday, we received the adjusters' engineers' report on the mechanical and equipment, electrical equipment from the inspection that they made in December. That's a fresh report, I don't think that, I don't know if your FEMA or architects have that information yet, but that's where we are in the process. So there's a good bit of communication, as you'll see when we get into this next document, that's going to need to take place. And what we hope to do, and my recommendation is that we get the architect and the adjusters together to go through some of these details that I'm going to take you through in just a minute. So if you turn to the next page, you have the first page of the November 3rd version of the architect's scope of work for Westside Elementary. And I've just highlighted in the blue box, well, you'll see at the top, the red mark shows what the, what the engineers for the adjusters put on the document, that's going to appear in red. What I've outlined for you in blue is just the fact that there is some mitigation, some flood mitigation contemplated in the scope of work that, that's here. If you turn to the next page, you'll see the, the beginning of the, the red notes on the side, and there's two parts to this report, one is sort of a narrative, point by point, what needs to be done, a narrative description, and then the last two or three pages of this report are the numbers. How much is going to have to be spent to remedy these things? If you go to about the third page of the annotations, I've outlined for you this particular item, and there's going to be some other differences, but this particular item is, is the reason that the engineers were sent to the, to the site by the adjusters in December. These notes suggest that there's a need to replace some mechanical equipment that was damaged by the flood. The engineers' report that came back Friday, I think it was, suggests that there was, it concludes that there was no damage to that equipment. Okay, so that's, that's a difference. So what my recommendation is, you provide that to the architect and ask the architect if he can provide some comments regarding that. Now, he hasn't had an opportunity to see that report, and I wouldn't expect him to be able to answer that today, but that's where we are in that part of the process. If you turn to the next page, and I'm just picking out what I think are the, the big important pieces. Item 1.7, this addresses HVAC systems that do not conform to the codes. So this is a code issue. This says that the, the HVAC systems that were in the school provided a certain level of air movement and comfort, but the current codes call for something greater. What we haven't gotten back from the adjusters yet is their response to that. They're still evaluating whether or not the current codes require that. And, you know, at this point, we would say, any other information that we can provide to them to help them get over that hump so that they would agree to pay to replace this, you know, we need that information. If you go a couple pages back and you'll see the beginning of the, the document with the numbers on it, the actual cost estimate. And I've highlighted some of the big, the big numbers in blue, underline those in blue, just to call those to your attention. And the first one, for example, the exterior closure, I've totaled up what's on the left, in this case just $82,000. That's the insurance estimate total in this category that the adjusters have come back with. And you'll see the architect's estimate is $492,000. Now, that suggests to me that the adjusters don't agree that the exterior of the building was damaged by the flood. And one of the other parts in this report says that the exterior building or the exterior, putting concrete block on the exterior, and your architect will address this, is part of the mitigation for future flood. So if that's in fact why the adjusters have only 82,000, because they're not agreeing to, to put the concrete blocks, and in fact, if you read the, their, their notes on this, they're not, then that's, that's a point of discussion to have there, is whether or not the exterior of the building was actually damaged by the flood, or if there is some damage, was it caused by weathering over the many years that, that the school existed? Interior construction, you can see there's another big difference right there, and we really need to have comments from your architect about what's needed there, and again, the adjusters' reaction to that, because the adjusters have come up with something less than, than what's estimated in the, in the architect's scope of work. And then if you'll turn to the next page, you'll see the dollars associated with the mechanical equipment that I was telling you about on the other page. The insurance estimate's $250,000. The scope of work calls for replacement of those systems in almost 2 million dollars. And then electrical, you see there's another discrepancy there of about half a million And then, you know, I picked out general conditions, there's a difference there of about $400,000, and that's kind of the end of that report. Like I said, I just wanted to highlight some of those things for you and give you a general idea of where we are in the process. Before I go to the next document, does anybody have any questions you want to ask about that? Yes, yes sir?
Yes, thank you. Just 30 seconds of background, I used to own and operate an independent insurance agency. I represented Maryland Casualty, Zurich, New Hampshire, I don't remember, different companies, but do we have the option here of letting the insurance company redo the whole, I mean redo the school up to where, you know, using their dollars? I mean, would the insurance company agree to do it?
The, the insurance company is, is telling you, you mean actually take on the project itself?
We, we have architects that saying, and I'll just use round numbers, it's a million dollars, and the insurance company said, no, it's a half a million dollars. Do we have the option of telling the insurance company, or not telling, but going up to them and say, Mr. Insurance Company, if you, we think it's going to cost a lot more to do this. Our people that we hired say it's going to cost more than what you say. I'm going to use you as the insurance company. So you go ahead and do it, Mr. Insurance Company, you do it.
So what will happen is that, these are estimates, the insurance company is advancing you money based on these estimates, but when the project is done and the market tells you how much it actually costs to do these things, then we go back to the insurance adjusters. And if it costs more than what was estimated within the, you know, and it was for the like-kind and quality, then we go back to them for, for more money.
No, but we can't tell, if the insurance company thinks it can be done for half of what we think it could be done, can we tell the insurance company to go ahead and do it, let them hire architects, hire contractors and do it?
Yeah, I don't think that's in your policy.
Oh.
But I would suggest that we have the adjusters and the architects get together, and if the difference is in the rates that they're using for the various items, then, then we can get one to, to get them to come together on exactly what are the right rates to use for these estimates.
I didn't realize it wasn't, so what you're saying is the policy says, we're going to, we're going to tell you what, what the amount of money is going to take to fix this is, and if you want, if you think it costs three times that amount, that's your business, but we're only going to pay this amount.
No sir, it doesn't say it like that. They tell you they will pay for your loss and what it costs to put it back with like-kind and quality. Right now, they're just estimating what that is, and they're advancing you money. And once you have, and once we know what it did cost, then we go back and ask them to true that up.
I reserve more time later, Mr. Madam President.
All right, Mr. Santani?
Thank you, Mr. Como, for coming. Do you by any chance have the line items from the adjusters' estimates? I see you've totaled them up.
Yes sir.
May I, may I see that?
Yes you should.
Thank you very much. I feel like we ought to all be able to come to an agreement on what HVAC systems cost, right? So it seems like maybe if they're 1.7 million dollars off on the mechanical and the plumbing, it sounds like they're probably telling us that some of those systems don't need to be replaced at all?
That's correct.
Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to look at this and I may have more questions afterwards also.
So, Mr. Como, with regards to the equipment that you pointed out, the chillers and the condensing units that the architects indicate have been damaged, but the insurance company's engineers say are not, what is our next step? Are we having a second opinion or another engineer from our perspective to go in to look at those particular pieces of equipment?
My recommendation, which I've provided, is to have, ask the architect to review the engineers' report and the, the information that the engineer provided, and, and if he's got more information to help us, or if there's anybody else that can provide some information to help us argue with the, with the adjusters, then we want to do that.
Was the engineer there on behalf of the insurance company or on behalf of the school system?
He was there on behalf of the insurance company, and staff accompanied him, and, and in our meeting, in our meeting yesterday on these matters, I don't want to speak for staff, but they concurred with the findings of the, of the engineer, that there was no damage to the systems that were-
Okay. Also, what are, what is our policy limit on this policy?
For flood, it's 25 million dollars per occurrence.
And then are, is there any type of a coverage or replacement value for any of the contents, the lost library books, the belongings of the teacher that were on the floor that was destroyed?
Yes, yes, in fact, if you, if you go to the last page, this is the, just an update of the report I provided on December the 6th. And I've tried to break it down into three areas, the architect's scope of work, the estimated insurance proceeds that we have for the building, and then below there, sort of the everything else. So right now, you have an estimated cost for some temporary classrooms, there's coverage in your policy for that. We've sent that to the adjusters and we've asked them to tell us they're going to pay for all of that, and if not, what will they pay for and, and why not all of it? There's extra transportation expense, you've been busing kids from two other schools and as part of the extra expense coverage in your policy, that's been covered, they've recognized so far, $13,000 of extra expense you've submitted for August and September. They, they have acknowledged that you've probably had to pay your people extra money for time they spent in response to the catastrophe, and there is money available to pay for that if you'll submit that information. Cleanup and demolition, that was done by Surf Pro, their ticket was, I forget what their total ticket was, but the insurance adjusters paid, paid that, 242,000 dollars. Contents, so so far, everything that's been submitted has been recognized, and that totals 35,000 dollars, mostly books, I think. And then we expect there will be a need for some abatement of asbestos and lead, and there's coverage for that, we're just waiting for the official documents that say what that's going to, what that's going to cost. And then down at the bottom, I'm just showing you that, my understanding, there's some money expected from FEMA, my understanding is that FEMA has already acknowledged that your insurance policy has a 1 million dollar deductible and has agreed to pay 90% of
Mr. Santani?
Mr. Como, I think this is, and I don't know if you totaled it from this one, but this was, it seems to be the one in your timeline, the adjusters' first loss measure without code upgrades, do you have the one from December 6th to reflect code upgrades? That would be the 2.89 million dollars, this one subtotals the 1.16, which I assume is the one from October 13th?
Yeah, that's the construction-
Or the November 9th?
Yeah, that's the construction consultants.
Do you have the adjusters from December 6th?
I do, but it's not in that level of detail, it's just a number.
Oh, it's just a number?
Yeah.
So how do we, how did you total up the, the separate line items? Where you said the, like so, mechanical and plumbing, you said insurance estimate in total 250,199.09 cents, where did, where did you get that number?
So that's a total of the red numbers that appear to the left in that category.
Ah, that's where you got them from, okay, I was under the impression that you took something dense like this and-
No, no, in fact, that's, you know, there were two choices, we could take something dense like that and ask the architect to go through and compare what he's done to that, or we can take the architect's scope of work, which is what I think is important to this body, and ask the adjusters to go down and annotate, annotate that, and, you know, tell us if they're not going to pay for all of it, why.
So, so I guess they're, they're analyzing the question, right? So the, on mechanical and plumbing, it comes out to 249,000, let's call it 250,000 dollars. And then they have a note, waiting on engineer inspection for quite a bit of it, right? So it's- So it's a little bit shy of the 1.2, 1.2 million of the 1.9 million. So when do we expect to know that number, the engineer's inspection? Because didn't that already happen?
Yeah, I'm pressing for that right now.
On January 13th?
On January the 13th, we got the answer to what appears in 4.1 B, C, D, E, and F.
Sorry, what page? Oh, okay, let me flip back. And so what are we still waiting on from the?
On the next page, you'll see 1.7. So when we received that engineering report and recognized it did not address what's in 1.7, we asked them, was it supposed to? And the response is, that's a design engineer issue, not a forensics engineer issue. So the forensics engineer tells us, their opinion is that it was not damaged by the flood. And the adjuster's response is therefore it doesn't have to be covered by the insurance.
But our position is that it doesn't meet current code?
Our position is that it doesn't meet current code.
And thus the, I already forgot, $1.2 million?
Right.
For that middle section?
That's right.
Thank you for helping me understand that.
Yes, sir.
So the total amount that the insurance company has agreed to pay at this point is how much?
So.
Total.
For Westside, for the Westside building only, it's 2.8 minus your $1 million deductible, so it's $1.8 million.
And the estimate for the architect is $7 million, right?
Well, today it's 7.4 million. You had an, you had an update last week or earlier this week for an additional $400,000, which the cover note said was for mitigation. And again, mitigation is not covered on the insurance policy.
And that does include what FEMA has agreed to pay, or is that the 900?
No. What we're trying to do here is to try to get the insurance company to pay as much as we can get them to pay. FEMA is a different conversation.
Mr. Como, I don't know if this is in your wheelhouse, but FEMA has said they'll reimburse 90% of the deductible. Do you know if there's any other costs that FEMA will typically pick up in this kind of situation?
Yeah, I'm going to refrain. Rick is here to discuss that when I, you can.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he'll address a lot of this.
We'll come back, we'll come back to FEMA, because I think Mr. Santani has a few more questions for you.
So this is more along the lines of a, I guess, a claim management perspective where you said, we take the 2.8 now, and once it's done, we go back and we say, hey, we need you to make it right because it didn't cost. So obviously, they disagree right now that we're building to like-kind and quality. Is that a fair statement?
I don't think that's a fair.
You don't think that's a fair statement?
Well, would you repeat the question?
Well, I was saying, like, right now, because our architect has estimated $7.5 million, the insurance adjuster has estimated 2.8, the only way that I can, and this is after their code upgrades, right? So the only way from my understanding of the situation is that they must disagree that we're building to like-kind and quality.
Don't know the answer to that, and that's why I have recommended that we have the adjusters and the architects communicate on this and meet, and so we can get to the bottom of that.
And I like that approach, because I feel, I feel like maybe if we go ahead and build it, and there's a disagreement on their end about what they should pay, that very likely, very unlikely that we're going to convince them after the fact, when, I mean.
Well, your policy doesn't say that it's going to pay what was estimated.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, your policy pay, says it's going to pay what it took.
For like-kind and quality.
For like-kind and quality, and there's coverage for code upgrades as well.
Okay.
But not for mitigation. Or any other voluntary upgrades that you might want to make while you're, while you've got this thing all torn up.
Which, to use as an example, they think, and I have no idea what 6-inch CMU walls are, but they think we should be using metal studs and drywall. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
That's what's in there now.
It's wood now, right?
Wood, okay.
It's a code cause for metal stud and gypsum board. We're recommending masonry brick as a mitigation measure.
Okay, so they're saying that even though the masonry brick costs $184,000, they're saying we should save the $120,000 and use metal studs and drywall. That's their contention right now?
They being?
The insurance adjuster. I'm reading straight, I'm reading straight from his annotations right here.
The insurance adjusters are, that is their interpretation of replacing with like-kind and quality and meeting current codes.
Okay.
That's what that is. And if, and again, I'm not qualified to challenge them on that, but your architect is.
Okay.
And that's why we need to get these together.
Which, and I think this is my overall point here, is that if we go ahead and put the masonry brick in, while it probably is the best decision for the long term, why, under what circumstances would the insurance company suddenly say, or not suddenly, I don't want to say it like that, under what circumstances would the insurance company say, well, we see that you did the masonry brick, we thought you should have done the metal studs and drywall, okay, we're going to give you the $180,000.
For the, for the masonry brick?
Yeah, for the masonry brick. They wouldn't do that, right?
I wouldn't expect them to do that at all.
Okay.
I think, you know, you're going to hear from your FEMA consultant and your architect, my understanding, you might be correct, and they'll correct me, is that you have put this into your scope of work with the anticipation that FEMA will pick up that part of the task.
And so we're at the mercy of the federal government? It's an unenviable position. I'm sure, I'm sure you can see that.
Yes.
It's just a little bit of gallows humor as well.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for answering the questions. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, and then I think along those same lines, Mr. Santani, is we need to decide whether the mitigation is something that we want to pay for, and considering that this was the only school in our entire district that flooded, and at least at this time, it doesn't look like things are being done to prevent what caused the flooding at Westside in the first place. The mitigation is certainly something that we need to consider.
Do we get a lower premium if we spend money on mitigation?
I'll tell you that I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect it. The amount of discount you might get is going to be overwhelmed by market forces, whether the market's going up or down. And you're talking about, you know, a very small portion of your total portfolio. I wouldn't count on that.
Of the 7.5 million that it's estimated that it's going to cost to put Westside back, between the insurance company and FEMA, do you see us as the school system having to come up with any of that money, or should it all be covered by both agencies, the insurance company and FEMA, or is that a question that can't be answered?
I can't answer that. I don't know, I can't talk about FEMA, I just, it's not my area. But what I can do is tell you, I know, I know where they are now, where the insurance company is now. You know, you could stop now and accept what they're offering, or we can continue to push them to answer the questions about how they came up with their numbers, and whether or not a code upgrade is required, and that the mechanical systems have to be replaced, that's the big number, to meet a code upgrade.
Because what I'm thinking is like-kind and quality is going to basically be their opinion, correct? Or what like-kind and quality is, of putting our school back to the way it needs to be? Will it solely be their decision?
Well, they have provided you a document to show how they came up with that estimate. It's, it's an estimate.
Right. And then we have an architect that's saying, I'll trust your judgment looking at it. I'm just, I'm good, thanks.
So moving forward, so we could go out for bids, and so what can we do without knowing all this information? Can we, you know what I mean? Moving forward with the project of rebuilding Westside, do we have to wait until all this mitigation is done, or can we just go ahead and move forward, or?
Well, I can, I can just give you my opinion.
Okay, I'll take that.
So, yeah, so today, I would not tell you to expect any more than $1.8 million for this building from the insurance companies. That's, but if we get the architects and the adjusters together in February, then sometime after that, we ought to have some level of confidence in what the ultimate number from the insurance companies is going to be. Okay? And as I see it, and then you'll have to, you know, Rick is going to come up next and give you his explanation of what you might expect from FEMA, you'll have to take that and then add those two together and decide whether or not that's enough for you to go forward. That's, that's how I see it. You know, I'm just, I'm just trying to help you with one piece of this.
All right. If there are no further questions for Mr. Como, we'll hear from the FEMA representative.
Yeah, and I'll be happy to come back after you hear from those folks.
Santani, can I have that back again? I'm ready, I'm ready to give it to you. It was of no use.
Especially for Mr. Santani, I'm not the FEMA representative. I do not work for FEMA, I work for you guys. Couple of things, and I agree with everything Andre said. And in my mind, there are four things that make up this cost. The estimate of building it back like it was, which we know we can't do because of codes and standards. So first one is like-kind and quality. Then you add on top of that your required codes and standards upgrades that you have to have for the building. Then you identify any mitigation measures that you include, such as the concrete masonry walls, or the, or the water-resistant waterproof flooring that won't pop up in a next flood, those kind of items. And that, those are things that FEMA will fund beyond your insurance. And the fourth and final thing are upgrades that the school board voluntarily decides to do. Changes on the architectural finishes and features on the exterior of the school. Those things would be things that both FEMA, neither FEMA or your insurance company would participate in. One of the things that our company is going to do is we're going to bring on a cost estimator, and we're going to take Albert's design documents, and we're going to provide a cost estimate based on those four areas of cost. And it's going to take us about two weeks to do that. And we're going to get two major benefits from this. The first one is, we're going to provide a cost estimate the way FEMA likes to see the numbers. And FEMA likes to see the numbers by the nut, by the bolt, by the sheet of plywood or sheetrock. We're going to provide them that estimate in that fashion. The second thing we're going to give is where we believe it's insurance, where we believe it is FEMA, and where we believe it's going to be the school's responsibility for the total project. So the school board, the school officials, will have a better idea of how this pie is going to break out. The other thing I'd like to acknowledge is, the Governor's Office of Homeland Security is here today. They've been very supportive of the school board and their desire for mitigation and to make those improvements. And they came to support us today as well. And I'm open for any questions anyone might have.
All right, Mr. Anshel.
One of the fourth, and I didn't keep up with all the four things you mentioned.
Yes, sir.
But one of the four costs, the results that you mentioned was upgrades that the school board has determined over and above like-in-kind quality in materials? Is that it? We wanted more?
There has been discussions with the architect and the school system of bringing the, the school up to a new standard. And I, I think Albert would be better to have those discussions and to answer that. But there are some exterior facade finishes that have been updated that weren't damaged by the flood event. And they've been suggested to the school system to have those repairs.
Oh, so these are suggestions from the architects, that we go over and above like-kind and quality, which the policy would pay for and ultimately have to pay for it ourselves? The taxpayer would have to pay for it?
Albert, did I misstate that? I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, Mr. Santani.
So it's not any better that you work for us, you know? You first got the architect's scope of work document, or did you get it on November 3rd? Were you copied on that?
Yes, sir, I was.
And we haven't broken the costs out by those four buckets just yet?
We had not at that point. No, we've been working with FEMA in the development of the project worksheet for the repairs, and we've been struggling with the same issue with, that we have with insurance on codes and standard upgrades and compliance.
So we have a, we have a breakdown of the initial scope of work document from November 3rd on a, whatever, what is the project worksheet?
FEMA has not finalized their project worksheet for the repairs to Westside. They are, they've been given all of the information that was available, and they are in development of that project worksheet.
Right, but you know, I guess I'm asking about, you said we're going to give the information to FEMA the way.
We're going, now that we have the construction documents finalized, the design that the architect has finalized, we're going to provide FEMA with a cost estimate based on those construction documents. That was something that just recently was completed.
Why didn't we, well, no, I see that it was the $7.4 million scope of work was completed, and I'm asking about the $7 million that was completed two and a half months ago. Why haven't we?
That was the initial estimate that did not have construction documents to go along with it. It was the initial estimate from the architect of what this would cost.
So the revised scope of work had construction documents with it, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any additional questions for this gentleman? All right. We'll put you on the hot seat now.
Sorry, Albert.
That's okay.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm glad to be here and talk to you about anything you want to talk about.
Mr. Anshel.
Can you redo that school for the insurance company would pay minus the deductible?
Say that again?
Can you rebuild our school for what the insurance company would pay minus the deductible?
Uh, no, sir, I don't think so.
Under any circumstances? I'm not talking about extra this and extra that and facade and all that.
No, not under any circumstance, no, sir, I don't believe I could.
Okay.
Mr. Santani.
Can you do it for the additional, can you do it for $4 million, which it seemed to be was about roughly the disagreement on the HVAC systems?
Um, no, sir.
I'm not going to ask you to take the deductible out, I'm going to.
No, sir, I don't think that we could.
Why, why not? I would like to understand where the disagreement is.
Let me.
I'm not saying you're wrong, I have a feeling you're probably right, but I'd like to know where the disagreement is.
All right. We went through this in the last meeting, but let me, let me go through it again. School flooded. I'll try to keep it simple. School flooded. School was originally built 1955-ish, was a major add-on in 1981, and basically the school is sitting there the way it was in 1981. School flooded and they have damage, and the damage has to be repaired. When you go in to repair the damage, you repair this wall, you have to bring this wall up to code. And as you start adding those walls up, one after the other, you get to a certain point where you have to bring the entire building up to code. So we get to the point where we have to bring the entire building up to code. Bringing the entire building up to code means going to a non-combustible construction. Right now, as the, as the school sits, it's sitting with about 35% or so of the walls are concrete block. Concrete block, you know, is cement block. And the rest of the school is wood frame construction, with the exception of the 1950s classroom walls, which were the old steel. classroom walls, which were the old steel and, and glass window systems. Now, I'm going to back up and kind of play off of what Andre was saying. When we, when they're talking about putting together an estimate to do it out of metal studs versus CMU, and they're saying the CMU is a mitigation item, well, I think that what they probably have in their estimate is to replace the 1950's classroom walls, because they agreed early on that those systems got water inside of them, they're rusting from the inside out, their rust is already accelerated, you can see daylight underneath them. And so from the very beginning, when I was walking through the building with the estimators, we was discussing those things. And they, and they accepted that all the way back then. When we move into bringing the entire school up to current code, and we have to go into a non-combustible construction, that means that we have the option of all of the walls that are not concrete block existing with brick on them, on the exterior walls. All of the rest of the walls are wood with brick on them. So every one of those walls has to come out in order to meet current code. I don't think these guys have that in it. Okay. Now, having said that, we can go back with the, with the metal studs and the brick walls, or we can mitigate and put, instead of metal studs and brick walls, we could put CMU and brick walls. The difference in that cost is roughly between $150,000, $200,000. FEMA should mitigate 90% of that. So this is just one example. I can give you, I can stand up here for an hour talking about each one of the individual doors, floors, the whole nine yards. But every, every exterior wall on that school that does not have concrete block and brick has to come out and be rebuilt. Okay? Um, to clear up a little thing that Rick had, was talking about with the exterior finishes. We, we have decided to go with, um, using the foam filled insulated metal panels rather than brick. We still using some brick too. The cost is negligible. They're same. You can put, the brick or the metal panels on it, doesn't really matter. The metal panels is going to give it a brand new, fresh look. Those have to go, those walls have to be rebuilt one way or the other. So that's not a mitigation issue. That's not a replace with like kind issue. That's a codes and standards issue. So we have no choice, that has to happen. A lot of that's not included in these numbers.
Would that be under the, the exterior closure?
I'm sorry?
Would that be under the exterior closure section?
Uh, in my document?
I'm looking at your document that, that Mr. Como annotated for us.
All right, let me, because that's an old one, actually. I was going to talk about that a little bit as well. Tell me what you, what you're looking at?
The exterior closure where.
Are you on the estimate, or are you on the narrative?
I'm on the estimate, I think. It says preliminary estimated construction cost.
Okay, and that would be the.
3.0 exterior closure, you've estimated.
That's correct.
$492,000.
Now, you know, looking at that $82,000, I have no clue what they have in that $82,000. But since they have that on all of those numbers, they might be having, you know, they might have the exterior doors and exterior frames included, and that, they might have some of that aluminum stuff run. They might not have any of the, the, the new brick veneer and CMU, because they don't necessarily know what that is. And, and in my opinion, they probably don't know that that's a code issue.
But the point is, they don't think it's, they probably don't think it's a code.
They don't think it's part of the insurance.
Okay.
All right. So having said all of that, um, I'd like to step back, if y'all don't mind, and not be your architect for a minute, and be one of your, um, one of your concerned citizens that's a taxpayer. Okay? We have a deal in front of us right now. And what I'll tell you is, our current, our current cost to build this school, construction wise, and not soft cost, construction wise, is standing at right at about 6.3 million, under 6.3 million dollars. We have an insurance company that's already identified $2.9 million. So take your million dollar deductible out of that, and that's $1.9 million. Take 1.9 out of 2.6, 6.3, and that brings us to 4.2. Put FEMA aside, I'm going to change the paradigm here. Put FEMA aside, we know we're going to get more money out of them, we're going to get a lot of money out of them. Put the rest of the insurance company aside, I think we're going to get more money out of them too. So you're still looking at, if we were to build, if we were to do this thing right, and do it the way, the way we have it in these drawings, you're basically going to end up with a new school. You're going to end up with a new school that's going to serve you for another 40 or 50 years. At the 6.25, that's less than half of what it would cost to tear it down and build a new one. With the mitigation, my narrative has been, and when I say my narrative, what I have always tried to achieve with the mitigation is, flood event comes, within a week of the time the water leaves, inside of a week, the time the water leaves, the kids are back in school. Having said that, FEMA aside, and any additional money aside from that, $4.8 million for a 12 million, 14, maybe 16 million dollar school is a deal that the taxpayer can't pass up. I'm more interested, as a taxpayer, and a father of two kids that went through the school system, and a wife that taught in the school system, and a believer in the importance of the school system, to get the kids back in school. From my past experience, getting back as an architect now, from my past experience, I spent three years doing two major project renovations, restorations, down in St. Pino Parish after Katrina, dealing with FEMA. And what I'll tell you is, the very first project we started on was the 34th District Cardhouse. And the first PW from FEMA was $832,000. Three years later, the building was completely restored at a cost of four, I mean, $15.4 million. It was a fight, every step of the way, it took three years for that to happen. These kids don't need to be waiting three years to get out of school, and I learned a lot going through that process. If I was sitting in your shoes, I would come up with the money to put out to the bid, knowing that you're only putting up $4.8 million at this point, and knowing that you're going to get maybe another million back, maybe two million back, maybe three million back. But you're going to come out of pocket for some money, because they're not going to, they're not going to take everything. And at the end of the day, you're going to have a brand new school that can be mitigated during a flood event, that's going to last you another 30, 40, 50 years, for about 10 cents on a dollar. How can you pass that up?
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next item, because it is the action item about budget to Westside. So 2.3, budget revision request for Westside Elementary renovations project, 2016 Construction Fund budget, self-funded construction and general fund. And I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion?
To approve?
Yes.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Morrison, second by Mr. Lachey. All right. Any questions or comments from members of the public? All right. Members of the board? Mr. Angel.
How much money are we, are we adding? I mean, what's the?
Mr. Gidry.
Yes, it's.
Revision usually means more money.
It, it runs, it, it impacts multiple funds. Currently.
No, no, that's not my question. How much, this motion would be to increase by how much?
Well, it's to revise the budgets.
Be increasing it by 2.2 million, 250,000.
Thank you.
And that money would come from, in, in option one, we presented two options. In the first option, a million 750,000 of that 2 million 250, would come from the 2016 Construction Fund through a budget revision that would reflect a transfer from contingency line item to the Westside project. The remaining 500,000 would come from the, is proposed to come from the self-funded construction fund via a transfer from the roofing reserve, uh, in the amount of 500,000. There's a million five in that reserve, a 500,000 transfer would leave a million dollars remaining in the reserve for future roofing projects. And a third revision would be to reflect the $2 million of, of insurance proceeds. And, and that's basically how we would, in option one, how we'd fund the full 7.5 million. And in option two, the only difference from option one is, instead of transferring 500,000 from self-funded construction from the roofing reserve, we would actually defer 500,000 of capital projects to a later date. Those capital projects that are listed in the attachment would be to eliminate electrical upgrades at five schools, $100,000 per site. Those school sites being JW Falk, Edgar Morton, GT Linden, Paul Bro, and LJ Malama. So that's basically the difference between option two from, from option one.
And Mr. Gidry, and the recommended action that's on the item that is option one that it's describing?
Uh, yes, it is.
Because that's the motion to approve is option one?
It, it is option one, but of course could be changed at the boards.
I just wanted to make it perfectly clear. Mr. Santani.
Last week at the Finance Committee meeting, we heard much of the same, Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, we heard much of the same information, and the requested transfer from contingency to Westside Elementary School in the 2016 Construction Fund budget was 1.5 million. After considering the, the information we heard, the committees recommended that we transfer 1.25 million to the contingency line item, or from the contingency line item to Westside Elementary, in an effort, and this was done in an effort to maintain the contingency at $2 million. So I might understand now that the contingency line item will be one and a half million should we approve this move?
Actually, the, the contingency line item, if either option would be approved, would be half a million, 500,000. But the idea being, of course, there's no guarantees, but as we finalize the amount that we'll be receiving from our insurance carriers, as we get a better idea as to what the reimbursements from FEMA will be, then we'll come back and restore, where we can, those amounts that we've utilized in the preliminary budgets, just to get the project going. So yes, it's 500,000 in this scenario, but I could see, and would expect to see, that 500,000 increasing to some higher level, higher amount, once we start finalizing and get a, getting a better idea of what our reimbursements are going to be from those two entities, FEMA and our insurance carrier. The, the only, you know, there could be an option three, right, where we keep the contingency where it's at now, but then you're looking at deferring another 1 million 750,000 of projects in, in our self-funded construction fund, and we were, we were trying to avoid doing that. We thought that would be the less, the, the least attractive option out of the three.
Mr. Lachey.
If we were to go ahead and vote on and approve option one, get the ball rolling, in your estimate, or in anyone's estimate, do we have a timeline for when these kids can, can get back into school? You know, we're looking at a year, year and a half? Because I mean, I know the urgency to go ahead and do this now, January of 18?
I believe that we've already missed our window to get in January 18. We're about, running about a month behind that now, which means that, you know, if, if we don't have an issue getting them back in as soon as it's ready, might be February, might be March, depends on how fast we move. If it's, if it's more suitable to have them start a year or a mid-year, then it might be August 18. And it, you know, we are, what I'll tell you is, we have the drawings ready to go out to bid. Going to take the contractor at least 10 months to build it. What happens between when they go out to bid and when they get the contract signed is up to you guys. They could be in in February if we were to move forward quickly.
Mr. Santani.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Moliya. Uh, Ms. Moliya, would you, I don't think we asked, what was the $400,000 increase in your estimate from November to January?
Um, the very first estimate I put together was put together off of a narrative, a lot of pictures, many, many, many hours walking around in the building, three weeks after the flood event. Over the period of time that we worked on the drawings to get them ready to go out to bid, I updated it twice. Once in the middle, once we finished our design development and had all of the engineering to a degree where we could get down to some more detail, and then a final upgrade at the very end, when we were finished up with the, with the documents. The biggest change, I mean, there was a lot of little changes here and there, obviously, as we, we double-checked our square footages and so on and so forth. But the biggest change is several mitigation items. We had the concrete block mitigation from the very beginning. The new mitigation items that I've kind of worked closely with Rick on was, in lieu of using VCT tile at $2.25 a foot, we're going to use an epoxy quartz waterproof floor that will last forever, completely waterproof, and the, and the base will be molded up the side. And that runs about $7.50 to $8.00 a square foot. Instead of using standard metal doors and, and, and wood doors in the interior with metal frames, we're going to use FRP, which is fiberglass reinforced polymer doors, they're about 40% more than the regular doors. Cabinets, we stirred and stirred and stirred on that. We were talking about trying to lift them up 18 inches above the floor, and we thinking we got little kids in here, and so I did a lot, a lot of research, and actually, I went and met with one of the, with one of the local major cabinet builders. And we brainstormed together, and we found a product that is completely water resistant that can be laid up exactly like regular cabinets are laid up. And they can stir the plastic laminate, and, and so the only upgrade there is the actual core material and stainless steel hardware. We're also lifting them off the ground a little bit, so if there is a flood, the water can get out easier, and they can dry it out faster. But just a little bit. And that is about 35% more than a regular cabinets. And then another one was the security upgrade. We never, up, up until this point, we never really considered shooter type scenario. So we had, we were eliminating the exits from all of the classrooms to begin with anyway, because of the, the code upgrades. And it just made a lot of sense to, you know, add, they're going to have several doors, key doors, that they're going to have electronics that they can lock down. The classrooms are going to have indicators on the doorknobs that it's locked, so the teacher can see it's locked from across the room. And then the biggie on that is, we're putting between the, the administration area and the cafeteria, we're going to put a, a wall. It's going to be a heavy duty fence, but it's going to be a wall, it's going to actually have exit doors in it, that will keep anybody from being able to get into, into the courtyard. have exit doors in it that will keep anybody from being able to get into the courtyard and so on and so forth. The front door going into the lobby of the administration will just be a regular aluminum saw front door to get into the lobby, but to get back behind that wall will have a more substantial door with electronic lock. And the cabinetry at the administration office is going to be concrete block walls filled with concrete cells, countertop with bulletproof glass and a deal tray like you would see at, you know, some of the, some banks or whatever. And then they'll have a bulletproof door next to that that will be buzz in, buzz out. And then they have an open counter behind that so that if somebody comes in and the teachers recognize them and it's, you know, so-and-so, and they can just buzz them in and then they can deal without having to play with the window and everything. So those are the major advancements in the cost from the November update. But, you know, to be honest with you, I'm pretty surprised that it hadn't changed that much from the very beginning when we were just sticking our finger up in the air, you know? So, but we did do a thorough, you know, a thorough takeoff. And then what Rick was talking about earlier is by having a third-party estimate, it's going to allow that to go back against the insurance company's numbers, item for item, and it's going to allow FEMA to take those items and just move through them one after the other because it's the federal government system for doing that.
Thank you. I'm very happy to hear that those all sound like very well-thought-out upgrades and we're not, you know, putting fancy light bulbs and things like that in there. To your other point, when you had your taxpayer hat on, I agree with you. I mean, this is, this is, I think you, you've done a very good job of navigating what's probably a pretty complex situation where it's not simply design, build, and build, right? It's design and negotiate with adjusters and things like that. And I will say, the, nothing to do with your plan, but the funding mechanism of it, I don't think I can support it at this point because it's a bargain, but I can't just wave my hand and find the money because the money's not there. I mean, what we're doing is, we're going to rebuild a school and we're going to deal, go with years, another year on this electrical systems at those five schools, right? We're going to have to wait three years for FEMA, for this 90% of the FEMA? I mean, there's a lot of unknowns in here, not the least of which is the anticipated $2 million in insurance reimbursements when our insurance broker stood at the podium and said, "At this point, I wouldn't plan on getting anything more than the 2.8 that you've already gotten." And yet, we're supposed to plan on getting nearly double, double that. So I would personally be more comfortable spending reserve money to fill this with a resolution that would say, "We're not going to increase any anticipated revenues until the reserve is paid back." But this, right here, I'm not comfortable with it, this way. This is a great project, and I want to find some way to get this done, but I don't think I can support this particular thing. So thank you for all the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Angel?
First of all, I want to, I agree with, I want to agree with the last part of what Mr. Santani said concerning the cost, but I disagree with the first part that he said. I think it's very, for lack of a better word, reinforced fiberglass and all those upgrades he's talking about, floors that will last forever and cabinets that are very expensive. I think, here again, I'm a more conservative taxpayer on this side than you are, so, but I just think we can do it for a lot less. We don't have to have these fancy doors. I think we should go with the doors that the insurance company would agree with, and I just, that's just my point. Second, the other comment I want to make, or question I want to ask, you mentioned, somebody mentioned that the school was built in 1950 or 1951, something like that, yeah? How many times has the school flooded since 1951? Once? So, you know, we're spending a whole lot of money on something that happened almost three-quarters of a century ago. So I would like to see it done. I absolutely would like to see Westside reopened. In fact, it has to reopen as soon as we can, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to be swayed by the usual, this happens almost every time something like this comes up. We've got to do this, we've got to spend this money, more money than we can, but time is of the essence. And if you don't do it, then you're all, you know, you're creating havoc for the little children, and that's, that's not the idea. I'd just like to do it in a more conservative manner. Just think, for instance, we've got five high schools, six high schools with industrial arts departments. Maybe they could build a cabinet as far as, almost a tenth of what he's talking about. Thank you.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes, we're in a process of building a new school and planning to build another new school, and no one comments about what's going into those schools because they have to be built to standard in codes. So what's the difference about rebuilding Westside the way it's supposed to be built with the codes and all the upgraded additions that, you know, should go into the school? So that's my question. What's the difference? We're getting basically a new school for a lot less money. We're getting ready to build another new school, Broussard, a new Broussard Elementary School. How much will that school cost us to build? 16 million? 15 million? I think 7 million, 8 million is a deal here. So sometimes we have to take advantage of a deal when it's on the table. We may never have that chance again to get a new school with that amount of money. So just realistically, you know, we may have to juggle what we do, change what we do, but, I mean, look at this opportunity here. It's an old school. We have several old schools in the Scott area. Look at Elio Giudice, Tucson. There's so many things we could do in other areas. And I'm here to support where the need is, but now we need to look at supporting, you know, the entire district and really look at this. So just think about that, what we're getting for a lot less. Thank you.
Dr. Chassell? All right. Mr. Broussard?
I know we are not objecting to rebuilding Westside, or we have, or do we have a problem with some of the perks that is going into it? I mean, the fancy doors, whatever one may consider a fancy door versus a standard door or bulletproof glass and to, is that what I'm hearing, some of the perks are overpriced in some of the design? I know at one time we had a conversation with just building schools at basic, and we got away from that. Every time we build something, we want to build a little bit better with all the bells and whistles. So the question I'm asking is, are we trying, are we asking to delay this project, to come back to the drawing board, to try to cut some of the cosmetic out because there's no money in certain budgets, or why do we want to delay this?
And correct me if I'm wrong, we're not talking about cosmetic, we're talking about two things. One, adding a good state-of-the-art security system like we plan on adding to other schools, and then also adding mitigation in the event of future flooding because this was the only school in the entire parish that flooded.
When I gave those numbers for those items that I was calling mitigation, I'll offer y'all two trains of thought here. First of all, we fully expect FEMA to pay for that, up to 90%. As a backup position, we can always put in our bid documents an alternate to use metal studs instead of CMU, to use wood doors instead of the fiberglass doors, to not put the bulletproof stuff in, and have those alternates there to, you know, but still get the ball rolling, still get the thing moving. And once those numbers come in, number one, that will help get reimbursement from the insurance, that will help get reimbursement from the FEMA, and you can make an educated decision at that point whether or not it's necessary. The second food for thought is when it comes to the flooding. I have sat in with meetings with Finstermaker, and they have indicated that this wasn't a 100-year flood, it was a 10-year flood. I said, "How can it be a 10-year flood when the school's been there for 50 years and has never flooded?" Through a little investigation, we went back and looked at old drawings, and one of the issues is that everybody thinks the water's supposed to be going south. But the water originally on that school traveled north, turned west, and went to Akuli. Sometime between then and now, that drainage path has disappeared, and that's why every time it rains, the parking lot gets flooded with water. The water does not want to go uphill until it gets to a certain level, and then it's basically stagnant until it evaporates away. So whether or not that can be fixed or will be fixed is not something that will happen overnight. It might, it's something that might never happen because of all of the different landowners and all of the distance that it's traveling to get to that Akuli. So yes, the school is apt to flood again.
Thank you. And just for, so everyone knows, I'm in favor of the current motion. I think that we need to go ahead and approve the funding so that we can get it out to bid and get work started to get these kids back into their schools sooner rather than later.
Mr. Lashley?
I'm going to go ahead and agree with Ms. Morris, and stand corrected, I think the school has flooded twice, Dr. Chasson. Put up the Tucson, I don't know if he's telling me Pisa twice. Twice. I'm just picking at you, sir. Yes, I believe Westside needs and deserves to be rebuilt quickly. We need to get our children, me and Mar, me and Ms. Morris represent that district. Our parents are really wanting their children back, back home, back in Scott. I like the security upgrades. The price is a little steep, but in the end, I feel confident that the insurance company and FEMA will come through, and I'm going to go ahead and support this.
Any other comments from the board?
I'd just say, the reason for the delay is, we didn't have all this information. Now that we have all the information on the table, I feel very confident tonight to make that decision. So that was the only reason for the delay, but I still stand that I support it 100%. Thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
5, 4, 2 against.
Okay, motion carries. Agenda item 2.4, Finance Budget Revision Request for General Fund, Austin Elementary Security. I'll entertain a motion. All right. Motion to approve by Mr. Angel, second by Mr. Lashley. Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Craig, any?
If I could, Austin out there on the western part of the parish, it's an open campus, it's a rural campus. We've had some ongoing problems with visitors, unapproved visitors on the weekend, and they get to school on Monday morning, there's cans and vandalism and Ms. Claus has requested some security cameras, several enhancements, but she's requested some security cameras. I got with the Director of Technology, we'd recently completed a Truman Security project and cameras, and we had extra money beyond total completion of the Truman project, and so we're recommending and asking that we transfer money from the Truman Security Camera Project to Austin so that we can get them some security cameras.
Okay. Mr. Santani?
I just want to verify that this is, and congratulate Ms. Dickerson for coming in under budget on her project, and this is simply a transfer of line items, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the members of the public? All right. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
7, 4, and then against.
All right. Agenda item 2.5, Facilities, Approval of Servitude Agreement to Center Point Energy for Gas Service to Southside High.
I move that we approve this item.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Lashley, second by Mr. Broussard. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Members of the board? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Looks like...
7, 4, and then against.
All right. And then our final item of the evening, 2.6, Finance, Presentation of Sales Tax Scenarios for Consideration of a Call for Election for Sales Tax. And the recommended action by staff is that the board provide some indication as to which scenario should be presented at the meeting. So I'm reading that recommended action as simply a narrowing down of the presented scenarios for the later meeting. So, Mr. Guidry?
Yes. Originally attached to the, this agenda item were four scenarios which covered a half-cent and 5.8 cent sales tax over 30 and 35-year periods. The handouts that were distributed just prior to the meeting started added an additional eight scenarios whereby we considered that same 1 cent and 5.8 cents, but over a 10-year period and a 15-year period. With some of the scenarios being purely pay-as-you-go and others, including the sale of sales tax revenue bonds, with the, that portion of the sales tax collections not going to debt service being a pay-as-you-go, so sort of a combination of the two. So we felt that with these 12 scenarios, it would give the board good coverage in terms of the different possibilities that they can consider in anticipation of addressing or identifying which one the board would like to go with should they choose to move forward with the call for the election on February 15.
Mr. Santani?
Mr. Guidry, what was the, I know you indicated at our meeting last week that you had some questions that you and Mr. Osborne had to resolve regarding the levying of the sales tax in certain areas of the parish. What did you find from your, your research, particularly as it regards to Broussard, Youngsville, and the TIFs at Louisiana Avenue and Goria Switch?
The request from the State Attorney General's office has been made. We have not received the response yet. That request has been made by Mr. Jerry Osborne, so we're waiting on it.
Do you mind telling us what the, what the specific question was?
No, not at all. The question relates to if the board... The question relates to if the board were to move forward with a one-cent sales tax, there are two municipality areas that would be limited in collecting only half a cent. More specifically, in Youngsville and Broussard. So the question to the State Attorney General's office is, if the proposition reads a one-cent, a one-cent sales tax, are there any issues with only half a cent being collected in Youngsville and Broussard due to the restrictions? So it's more of a, you know, the wording of the proposition. The AG opinions that Ms. Osborne identified that address this particular issue, I think the most recent one was 20, almost 30 years ago. So he's looking for updating, getting an updated opinion since this particular penny falls under a different statute anyway. So those AG opinions related to a different, a very similar statute, but not the same one. So that's what we're waiting on right now. So the scenarios that we've added, the half-cent scenario, we would not need a response or AG opinion at all because that can be collected throughout our school district. The five-eight scenario, five-eight cent scenario would basically be a minimal amount over and above that half cent that could not be collected in Youngsville and Broussard. So the idea being that the differential would be much less than if it were one, one cent, in terms of what, what we would not be collecting in those two municipalities.
Mr. Lashley?
I think it's my understanding that staff is looking for a direction and a recommendation this evening of maybe which way the board would like to go. What I'd like to ask is, could we maybe elaborate a little bit on the half-cent 10-year sales tax? That's the pay-as-you-go. The amount does not exceed, I think it's 195 million that we have the project listing on. Could you speak on that, that scenario for a second, please?
So, Billy, Billy, I can go ahead. So, members of the board and the audience, we did run a project listing for a half-cent sales tax, 10-year term, pay-as-you-go. It's on page two of the handout that you received at the beginning of the meeting. So that particular proposition generates approximately $194 million over a 10-year period. My office would recommend that we focus exclusively on eliminating temporary buildings. It has been mentioned as the most common theme in discussions about the dire facility needs for the district. So looking at that list, Caron Crow Heights Elementary School, due to its age, as well as Prairie Elementary School, due to its structural issues, which are significant. And in particular Prairie, due to the very large number of temporary buildings. I would recommend to the board that we consider replacement of those two elementary schools. Caron Crow Heights, the estimate for construction of a new school would be roughly $32 million. Prairie Elementary School would be just a tad bit larger, larger student population. The budget would be $34 million. The remaining projects focus exclusively on eliminating temporary buildings. For example, Lafayette High School is listed as a replacement of 35 temporary classrooms. The cost for that new standalone building at Lafayette High School is estimated at about $45 million. I had a team that traveled with me to Ascension Parish. Ascension Parish is undergoing just that type of rehabilitation at their aging high school campuses. Specifically, what they're building on their existing high school campuses is a standalone, multi-level building that they are calling freshman academies. Specifically, they offer English, Math, Science, and Social Studies courses to ninth graders exclusively in that building. So they're calling it the freshman academy building. They're building that structure in such a way that it addresses other needs in Ascension Parish. In my mind, Lafayette High School has a couple of serious structural challenges, one being the size of the cafeteria, as well as the current instructional spaces for band and chorus. So therefore, that $45 million budget for Lafayette High could be the beginning of a freshman academy. It definitely would replace some 35 temporary classrooms, and it could serve as new instructional areas for disciplines, as well as a possible new cafeteria. Evangelion Elementary School has 32 temporary classrooms. The estimate for replacing 32 temporary classrooms is $16 million, of which $12,800,000 would be used to build the new wing. The remaining $3,200,000 would be used to upgrade core service areas. Ridge Elementary has 24 temporary classrooms, the budget is $12 million. Boucher Elementary School has 24 temporary classrooms, the budget is $12 million. Plantation has 22 temporary classrooms, the budget is 11. Broadmoor and Woodvale have 26 and 20 temporary buildings, as well as Deuceon and Eleo Juddies, each with nine temporary classrooms. The budget of $194 million would allow for the district to replace 251 temporary classrooms, reducing the number of temporary buildings in this district in a single decade by some 59%. So that, in a nutshell, represents what a half-cent sales tax can accomplish over a 10-year period, specifically addressing the removal and the elimination of temporary classrooms.
Mr. Broussard?
Dr. Aguilar, would you say that's the greatest need in, in our district? I know there's lots of need, would you say that's the greatest need, replacing these, these buildings? In the group of schools you have?
Yes, sir. There is no greater need in the district. However, it's fair to say that there are some unmet realities. This is a 10-year tax that would be proposed if, if adopted by the public. This would get us, get us to the point of being able to say we've eliminated 250 temporary buildings. There will need to be a renewal of this tax or the adoption of additional funding mechanisms as we start to build these new wings and these new schools. I think the message that's been relayed to me is that this board, this school district needs to continue to build confidence and transparency, needs to show that we are spending the public's money wisely and prudently. I think what we're being asked to do is demonstrate very quickly that we can begin to address the inordinate number of temporary buildings. There will need to be a Phase Two to this construction schedule and a Phase Three perhaps, but this gets us started. We've been talking about this. I've been hearing you express the need to do something about facilities as long as I have been here in this district. So I would urge you to consider these as projects that are worthy of consideration in the first phase of construction.
Now, staff has asked for some directive as to which scenario should be presented at the February 15 meeting. I would like to ask the board to discuss perhaps eliminating the scenarios that have a 30 and 35-year life, as well as the five-eight cents sales tax scenarios because they're not equitable across the parish. Okay, Mr. Lashley?
If it's necessary, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do that.
All right, a motion by Mr. Lashley, and a second by Mr. Centany to eliminate all scenarios with the five-eights cents, and also the scenarios with either a 30 or 35-year timeline. Any discussion from members of the public? Okay, members of the board? Ms. Morrison?
Okay, the projects that are listed, is it subject to be changed? Or are we, you know, if the tax passed, we have to stick to what's on here?
Yeah, I think we discussed at the last meeting, I'm sorry, Ms. Morris, I didn't ask for your permission.
That's fine. I was gonna say, we are gonna adopt a resolution that will be referenced in the tax ballot. So the project should be included in that resolution because I think the intention is that this will be a dedicated tax, dedicated to particular projects. But we will have an opportunity to discuss the project list at the February 15 meeting and get it firmed up. But I would also encourage that if you have any comments or questions to direct it to staff so we can work on it in the meantime.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from members of the board on the motion on the floor?
Madam President?
There's four scenarios to me that were posted with the agenda item and then the document that was handed out tonight.
You repeat the second part of the motion?
Yeah, and to eliminate the scenarios that have either a 30 or 35-year timeframe. Right, she had the first part? Yeah. If the motion passes, that would leave Scenario 1, 2, 5, and 6 on the handout that was given to us today for, for further discussion. You can amend the motion?
While making the motion, if we could go ahead and eliminate the 15-year, the half-cent 15-year, and just concentrate on the half-year, half-cent 10-year options, that would leave?
Scenario 1 and 2.
Scenario 1 and 2.
Okay, Mr. Centany, do you agree to that amendment on your second? Okay. So Madam Secretary, the motion will be to eliminate the scenarios with five-eights cents and also all scenarios with greater than 10-year timeframes. 10, 13, I'm sorry, 15, 30, or 35-year timeframes. The difference is, this is a special board meeting, and we can take action tonight. It's not a committee of the whole, which was the difference in the prior procedural issue.
I would also point that the thing that we're voting on is not actually on the, like, this additional part of the motion is actually not attached to the agenda for the evening. The first part of the motion where you're eliminating the 30 and 35 years was attached to the agenda.
Right, those scenarios.
Make a point of order there.
Right.
I see no, no issue with just leaving these others. I mean, I, you know, I'm looking at this list, I would be in favor of the half-cent for 10 years, pay-as-you-go. But, you know, I understand that's not a part of the agenda tonight.
Well, we're the unanimous vote, we can amend the agenda. If you want to make that motion. Because the handout was not posted with the noticed agenda. If someone made a motion to amend the agenda to add these scenarios or to add Scenario 1 with a half-cent sales tax for 10-year, pay-as-you-go, then it would take a unanimous vote for any type motion. Otherwise, because staff is asking for a directive, then I think that we can just simply eliminate from the scenarios they've presented. That doesn't necessarily close the door to any additional scenarios that they come up with between now and then, but it does give them some direction on what we're looking at with the half-cent 10-year type scenario.
Well, that, I would be fine with the, with the original motion.
Leaving the 10 and 15-year options?
And I don't think we run, we run afoul of any, any possible meetings issues.
Okay. So do you want to return the motion back to the original?
I'll go ahead and agree with that.
All right, so Madam Secretary, if you just remove the language for the 15 years, so it should be the five-eights cents sales tax and the 30 and 35-year timeframes. All right, is there any further comment or question from members of the board on the motion on the floor? All right, then, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote on that motion.
Seven, four, none against.
All right, so the scenarios remaining after the vote, I just want to make it very clear, is Scenario 1, which is a one-half cent sales tax, 10-year, pay-as-you-go. Scenario 2, a one-half cent sales tax, 10-year, sales tax revenue bonds. Scenario 5, one-half cent sales tax, 15-year, pay-as-you-go. And Scenario 6, one-half cent sales tax, 15-year, sale tax revenue bonds. Mr. Angel?
I just wanted to make a comment concerning this, the handout. I just want my, my colleagues to know that when I, when I consider myself for the taxpayer, it's not, it's not regulated just the West Side, I want you to know that, Mary. On the handout, we have 35 temporary buildings being replaced at Lafayette High. 35, I'll repeat that. And 32 at Evangelion, three fewer classrooms. And of course, the, the difference, the estimate, however, is quite a bit different. $45 million at Lafayette High and $16 million at Evangelion. And I understand that you, for some reason, you're gonna build a new cafeteria at Lafayette High and not Evangelion. And you also, in, in, in the, in the printout, I mean, I understand, it's just a scenario. We're gonna build a new band room and a new chorus room. I just want to point out that we just spent $7 million at Cuomo to put a new band room for the performing arts. So maybe we could spend less of that $45 million and put it somewhere else. Thank you.
Mr. Angel? That's the, that's the one number on that estimate I'm less certain about, the magnitude of the dollars necessary for Lafayette High. We're using that number merely because in Ascension Parish, those freshman academy buildings were running in that $40 to $45 million range.
And also, Dr. Aguilar, the freshman academies are multi-story rather than a single-story wing?
They also include specialty areas like the science labs and things like that. However, Mr. Angel, I want, want you to know, we're gonna try to stretch this money. It's possible that if we get started quickly and if some of these projects come in under budget, we might be able to squeeze an additional project into, into this proposition.
Mr. Centany?
I have, I have two things to say to Mr. Angel's point. I think, I think the way I kind of picture this in my mind is we wouldn't be doing any of the upgrades to the core services or the band room or anything until all of the portable buildings are taken care of. You know, because as you and I have both witnessed, that the prices are not necessarily pencil sharp right off the bat, certainly at
prices are not necessarily pencil sharp right off the bat, certainly at this stage. And, you know, I would certainly want to make sure we deliver on what we promise, first off. That said, Dr. Aguilar, would you please email this to all of us so that we may distribute this to anyone concerned? And, yeah, that's all I, that's all I have.
Yes, sir. Be glad to do that.
And, Dr. Aguilar, correct me if I'm wrong, but the elementary schools, the cost would include the security upgrades?
Absolutely.
And I think we had discussed earlier that the estimates here are based on a square foot construction cost of about 225 a square foot.
So if you would like just a little more detail, I did contact the four architectural firms that we are working with currently and asked them to help me try to calculate a budgeting number for replacement of temporary buildings. They did quite a bit of work to try to answer my questions. The average cost per square foot rendered by these architects independently to my office was roughly $217 a square foot. The average cost estimated by these architects to replace a single temporary classroom with a permanent structure is, was an average of $340,000 per classroom. I was advised repeatedly that construction costs increase annually by about 2.5 percent. That being the case, some of these classrooms that are going to be replaced in years seven, eight, nine, and 10 of this tax proposition will carry an inflation value of about 25 percent. So 340,000 in today's dollars with 25 percent inflation makes the cost of that replacement classroom $425,000. So I want to note also that we are squeezing money out of the budget in each of those cases to make improvements to the core service areas. We need, in many of those cases, we have to expand the cafeteria. We have to address the library. We have to address administrative areas in those buildings. So I am hopeful this budget of about $500,000 per temporary classroom to rehabilitate these schools will give us enough money, seven, eight, nine, and 10 years, to finish these projects under budget.
Mr. Bruceard?
Dr. Aguilar, when you email all the board members this sheet, could you explain a little bit more for the public when we distribute this as to what, what much, what's more we're doing with the money for each school? You say the security update, expansion of the cafeteria, whatever, whatever you can put per school to be informative to the public, it would help us in our sales pitch.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cormier, did you want to come up and say something? I'm sorry, Sonya, sorry. I'm looking, I'm looking straight, I'm so sorry.
Madam Chairman, I know this may be out of order, but I just wanted to give you a suggestion. You're saying that at the next board meeting, you're going to discuss the projects that they have listed here, you know, the schools and talk about it. And, you know, they're all worthy, but I think one thing you may want to do is, board members may want to go visit those schools and see the condition they're in, because I know Ms. Morrison probably has a question about Eleo Juddies. It's not the, replacing the temporary buildings. I mean, that school, I moved into it when I was in the second grade, so I know how old it is, and the classrooms are really small, so they don't accommodate what we do with children today in the primary grades, you know, as the new schools have larger classrooms. So if every board member would visit maybe three or four of the schools to see what the condition of the school is, what the condition of the classrooms are, then when you make a decision on this list, just visit the ones on the list. Then you'll know what you're talking about. You will have seen it because a picture is worth a thousand words. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Ms. Pat, and you're exactly right, and that's why I want to do a walkthrough, and that's when I come in to do the recommendation on February 15. I have more information about why I'm making this recommendation, but thank you for bringing that up tonight.
All right. Any additional, Dr. Chassal?
The, the upgrading of the core service areas, that refers to the security packages? No?
No, sir. The phrase, and I'm referring to is upgrading the, expanding the cafeteria, expanding the library, expanding the administrative wings. The security package will just be a component of each of those projects.
So it's in the, for instance...
There's enough money in the, in the allocated budget.
Okay.
And the question has been raised to me, what about the other schools? What we are recommending with this tax proposition is that we would back out of the collections. We'd back out $3 million annually for regular maintenance. And I want to call to your attention that we are also backing out the portion of the revenue that we have to share with the charter schools in Lafayette Parish. Anytime we raise additional dollars, the charter schools get their share of that revenue stream. In the case of a half cent sales tax, the charter schools would receive annually a total of about $1.6 million from these collections. So we're going to back that out so that we don't get stung later on in the budgeting process.
And, Dr. Aguilar, you've attached also a map to the documents. Could you just explain what that is and what it represents?
So we began work on this, this map that's in your packet. It shows the projects that are recommended and the geographical locations. We have already received a request that in addition to the recommended facility improvements, that we continue to populate the map with some of the most recent projects that have been completed by the district. Examples of that would be the ongoing Southside High project, as well as the completed GT Linden, Youngsville Middle, soon-to-be Milton Elementary School, David Thibodeau. We want to show the public geographically where we have, you have been spreading out the work in the district.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions, comments? Dr. Chassal?
Doc, the, the $3 million tax collections, I didn't hear the final portion of it. That's for the security...
That would, that would be money for roof upgrades, general maintenance, as well as some of that money could be used annually to begin to make some of those safety improvements in, in other campuses.
Okay. And then my final question is, when would we, when would we finally vote on the, the final estimated project listing?
So I think that would need to be in the resolution that's adopted by the board, no later than February 15.
Okay.
Mr. Gettrich?
Yes, I just wanted to make mention of the fact that also in, in the packet of information from Barta to you is the resolution, or a draft of the resolution that would, might be included in the proposition, a reference to it in, in the proposition that goes on the ballot. And basically, it's very similar to the one that was presented for property tax. It's been reworded so that it relates to sales tax, but it has a provision, I'd like to call specific attention to section two, where in addition to, one of the changes we made since the last time this resolution was presented, is that in addition to a change to the project listing requiring a two-thirds majority vote of full membership, in addition to that, there would be a special board meeting during the first quarter of each year, during which our external audit firm would present the result of their, of their audit on the related construction fund. So you'd have an external independent party presenting audit results of how the funds are being expended with regards to how they were intended or meant to be expended. So that is in addition to the resolution draft that was presented at our last meeting.
All right. Any further questions or comments? If not, then I will declare this meeting adjourned.